Well, good afternoon. Commissioners, welcome to this study session. We'll, we'll call this study session to order. And I believe Ms. Knight, you're going to call the role for us. Is that right? Thank you for that.
Commissioner Levitt.
Here.
Commissioner Madrid.
Here.
Commissioner Casaus.
Here.
Commissioner Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant.
Here.
Commissioner Garza.
Here.
Commissioner Rowley.
Here.
Commissioner Paula.
Here.
Mayor Morris.
Here. Thank you, Ms. Knight. Appreciate that very much. Like to again say thank you to you commissioners and welcome you to this study session. As you know, you appointed me to a working committee some number of months ago, and I've attempted to update you as to the progress of that working committee. And I think it was time for a study session for you to all have the opportunity to, to hear presentations from those that have been doing the work of, of exploring setting up a land trust in the, in the spirit of, of water conservation. And, and that's what this evening i- is all about is, is that to, to enlighten you as to what the, the working committee has, has established as, as what the plan forward should be regarding assisting the, the, the base, Cannon Air Force Base with executing on the REPI program. Again, all in the spirit of groundwater conservation in a, in a very targeted area. And I'll let our presenters expand on that. We'll have time this evening. The, the format is, is, we have five presenters and they're all going to keep their presentation somewhat brief and allow time for discussion and, and questions following each, each presentation. And once we've heard all of those presentations, if we still have questions, we will, we'll ask those questions. We'll ask anyone to, that, that could answer those questions to come forward and, and, and work on that. But the format we'll follow is we will go through the, the presentations, beginning with Mr. Spencer Pipkin. And then following Mr. Pipkin will be Mr. Peter Nichols, who's joined us virtually this evening. After Mr. Nichols will be Mr. Jeff Davis. And then Ms. Debbie Hughes. And last but not least will be the former mayor, David Lansford, and he's going to summarize the effort. We will get, get going. I, I thought I would mention, just as a reminder, and, and some of these folks are here, there's not enough, we're not going to go around the room and introduce one another, but if someone does have a question or a comment, we'll have you come to the podium, state your name for the record and, and that way everyone is identified that, that decides to speak. But I did want to point out that the working committee that, that I've, that I've been a part of is made up of Commissioners Spear and Riddling. That's County Commissioners Spear and Riddling, Mr. Pipkin, Mr. Steve North, and myself. Advisors for, to the working committee include, I may not get them all here, but Mr. Blake Prather, Mr. Ricky Luckmiller, Mr. Montague, Mr. Fish, Mr. Lansford, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Nichols. They've all participated as advisors during our meetings. And so you'll hear from, from some of them this evening. And with that, and in the spirit of, of moving along swiftly, let, let's get going. Mr. Pipkin with Central Curry Soil and Water Conservation District, he's going to get us started this evening. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all for inviting us to be a part of this. And the other presenters you'll hear later tonight. I, I came to a commission meeting, what, two, three weeks ago, and gave you a little information. I didn't have enough to share at that time, but I think at this point, we've got substantially more information to share. You know, Central Curry is a soil and water district within the state. We, we have been the legal entity of this, these two grants that have been awarded. So we're in charge of making sure those grants are handled properly and put to the ground to be used for water conservation. So our board members, I think Mayor Morris was, y'all may be curious who our board members are with Central Curry, myself, I'm the chairman. We have Clint Harden. We have Rachel Armstrong, Zach Cordell, Doug Doyle Carpenter, Casey Schooly. That consists of our, of our board members. And matter of fact, we have a meeting tomorrow to handle an issue. So, you know, all board members are, are important. But to give you a little update, kind of where we are now, you know, I was looking, in 2017, City of Clovis came up with a water assurance plan. It was developed for the City of Clovis. And if you look through the steps of that water assurance plan, you know, number one, to let, to develop a water reuse system, which y'all have accomplished and using it. Number two on that assurance plan was work with farmers throughout that paleo challenge to try to, to get their water reserved for city use. Number three on that list was develop a land trust. You know, to put this thing, we have to have a land trust to make these two grants work. It's required to have those done. Number four is restore Playa Lakes, which they are restoring Playa Lakes right now. That's being done. And then continue with Uke Pipeline Construction. That was y'all's five items that was on that plan. But as of right now, you know, we are developing a land trust. It's, it's being set up. Peter Nichols will visit with you a little about that here, here in a little while. But in developing that land trust, we have to be mentored for approximately 10 contracts just like to be certified. They won't allow somebody just to start up being a land trust. You have to be mentored. And we've searched around, we have found one that's very promising. We've interviewed with other land trusts, not real comfortable with them, but this one, it is a Texas Ag Land Trust. If you want to look them up, it's T A L T, Taught. They've been in business since 2005. They've worked on 255,000 acres of work. So, you know, they're qualified. But what's interesting, they kind of know, they're, they're producer oriented. They come from Ag. They know kind of what we're wanting to accomplish to protect our water here. So other land trusts, they don't have that background like these people. So very interesting to talk with these people, hopefully set up a meeting, you know, a week or 10 days to really get down to find out exactly what they require, what's going to take place. So very, very good news for, for this area. You know, and as I spoke earlier, we have been awarded two, two grants, a REPI grant and R C P P grant. There's 13.8 million dollars sitting there, ready to be put to the ground. And, you know, I'll mention, the City of Clovis or the county didn't have to come up that 13.8 million. That's, anyway, that's free money that we can use to protect our water. I think one of the big things in talking to this land trust over here, I, I explained to them, how often do you come by a land trust like this or a development process if you already have the funds in hand? He said, "That never happens." Says, "You guys are already up on it." Quite an accomplishment right there. Let's see. You know, and I guess probably what this whole meeting comes down to is for y'all to get an understanding why we're asking for funding from y'all. Is to set this up, to be able to run it, get it on its feet. You know, later on, it might could operate on its own. It, it might. We don't know that yet, but you know, that's something that could happen. So, you know, we have, we have had an awful lot of meetings on this for county, cities, even our board with Mayor Morris. You know, we do have a lot of meetings. There are a lot of components to this, this whole process. Very complicated. The executive director, whoever this is going to be, we have to have an executive director. You know, they're going to have to be very qualified. There's a lot of, a lot of things that has to be done and done exactly right. We'll have to get, you know, an accounting firm, keep very good accurate records for, for the public on this. This is public funding, you know, it is. So like I say, I think y'all have copies of the budget we proposed. And, you know, a budget is just an estimation, you know, the best we can. We kind of went back off of some other land trusts and some of their tax filings and kind of got an idea how they broke theirs down to put it on paper. That's as best estimation that we can get right now. There may be changes in it. It may not be sufficient. There may be, I don't think it's going to be too much money. I mean, it, it never is. Never does happen that way. So anyway, if there's any questions regarding anything that was brought up here, I would definitely enter, try to answer them.
We, we appreciate you sharing with us on, on that piece. Commissioners, Central Curry Soil and Water Conservation District is, is the eligible entity in the REPI application. And so, you know, that's, that's what brought Mr. Pipkin and, and Central Curry in, into this. And so I appreciate you, appreciate you explaining that. When you talk about the, the 13 some odd million between two grants, is that half and half? Is that REPI and R C P P?
That's total.
Half and half?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. What is the, what is the relationship? So, so Central Curry is the eligible entity with the REPI application, yet there's a land trust that's being brought up or that's, that's being worked on. What is the relationship between Central Curry and the land trust? Can you describe that for the commission? Are you an incubator for, for the, the land trust? Are you, are you going to be a, more of a pass through? And I guess I'll stop giving you multiple choice questions.
Basically, we're a developer.
A developer. Okay.
I mean, in, in a way, you know, and part of our steering committee, that's, that's some of the responsibilities too, to set up that land trust. But it ultimately, the Soil and Water District oversees that component of the land trust. You know, we were nominated to do that. You know, we're going to
Right.
Try to do it the best we can. Like I say, our district, you know, normally is small, very small little ideas. We have a learning, you know, we have a learning curve to come up on. It's going to be a challenge, but I think we're here to, to give it our best shot.
Yes, sir.
We got some, you know, some very qualified people helping on this project too. We can't do it ourselves. We can't.
Right. Gotcha. Appreciate that. So in the proposed budget, and, and it may be that some of the questions that, that we have would be maybe more for Peter and more for, more for you. So if you don't know, that's okay. But in, in the proposed budget, you have a executive director contract. The, the idea there is a, a contractor relationship with the, with the director. And then you also have other contractors for $96,000. Help the commission understand what other contractors are.
Some of that could be like appraisals, when you go out and appraise these properties with the water on them. You have, I mean, you have to, and you can contract some of those appraisals out, some of the, say geological studies, if there has to be something, you can contract that out. And I think there's an advantage to contracting the executive director tax, tax wise, liability wise too.
Sure.
Peter can probably analyze that a little bit better.
Right. Yeah. Put them on a, in a 1099 relationship so that you pay them their, their contract amount and no benefits or any of that.
True. True. There's some advantages to that.
Yep. Okay.
You know, and in that budget, no, there's, there's quite a bunch of legal fees. You know, there's, there's a lot of legal maneuvers in it. There's a lot. Even with this other land trust that we're talking with, you know, he, he told me upfront, said, you know, beware lawyers have to agree on, you know, they have lawyers, we have lawyer, you have lawyer. The lawyers have to become in agreement on all this. So
Right.
And it, you know, Central Curry has never had a lawyer. We're having, we're forcing ourselves to go get one just for, just for our, our security. And that's, that's different. It is different.
Sure. Sure. Commissioners, are there questions for Mr. Pipkin?
Mayor, I do have one.
Yes.
If the city chooses to participate with 150,000 and the county's 150,000, the first year, you're looking at 295,420. Where's the additional funding come from year after year after that?
There are components within the REPI not totally for overhead or administration. They're, they're pretty limited in those grants, what you can do with that funding. So you have to be careful. You know, we're looking 150,000 dollars from the city and the county each year. I hope there won't take more administrative funding.
Okay. So you're hoping the city and the county will provide additional funding every year for the administrative costs for this?
Right. We've, we've proposed that for a three-year time period.
Other questions, commissioners?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yeah, Commissioner Paula.
Mr. Pipkin, you, when you say that the land trust might operate on its own in the future, how do you see that happening?
Once you get this land trust and these contracts up and enforced, there's other places that are going to do the same thing.
Did you say there's other places that'll do the same thing?
I think, yeah. You're looking in Texas, even in New Mexico, they may want to go protect water rights too. There's a opportunity to have this being done elsewhere too, and you can generate funding from that too. There are some components in the REPI that require some of those funds being held back for the land trust, you know, to keep in administration.
That, that's kind of for the monitoring that will have to occur, correct?
Yeah, mostly.
But will, will that lump sum that is held back initially, will that be enough to fund the land trust in the future?
I don't think it will fund it totally. I don't. It definitely won't fund it for the first three years. You have to get these contracts up and going.
Right. No, I, I agree. I understand that part of it. So is the, will the trust then be in perpetuity and the city will be expected to be a half, 50% contributor to the operational expenses in perpetuity?
That's, I don't think it, I'm hoping that the land trust can operate on its own eventually. That's my goal through these funding projects and being able to capture some of those funds to administrate those. But those first three years, your, your hands are tied. You, you, you have to get these in effect.
And when you mentioned the Texas Ag Land Trust, were you referring to them as they would be the mentors on the first 10 contracts?
We hope so. We hope so.
Okay. I was trying to figure out how they fit into the equation.
They, they'll come and help us get established
Okay.
For approximately 10 contracts.
But is their fee in the budget?
We haven't got to the point to know what their fee is yet.
Okay.
That's the big, the big mystery. Initially, talking with them, they might let us, if we come up with an executive director, they might let this executive director do the work under their supervision. We fund it for them, you know? There may be a possibility. That'd be the most economical way because you're not having to pay them that executive director's position. We're hoping for that. We don't, they were pretty entertaining about that idea. A lot of these other land trusts, you know, they, they come in here and, you know, they want 20, 25% of your grant. They're going to take it for their, their work. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. You don't get it put on the ground. So we're trying to make everything, with all the money we can, put it on the ground. You're going to spend some on executive directors and administration. There's no way around that. You're going to spend it. But to let somebody off was too much is not right.
Mayor, the executive director you just mentioned, are you going to go out for a search or do you have somebody in mind already?
No, we'll have to go out on a search. You'll have to, you know, that's a special, that's a special person to get that, to be able, I mean, you're talking 60, 65 hours a week. It takes a lot of effort, a lot to keep in mind.
Mayor.
Sir.
So just to answer, I mean, to ask a follow-up to that, so if that's the amount of hours and the specialty that they need to have, is 85,000 a reasonable figure to think you can hire somebody for that?
I think it's, I don't think it's reasonable for that. I think it should be.
Which then would increase the overall budget.
I think it would.
All right, commissioners, unless you have another question for Mr. Pipkin? He's not going to go anywhere this evening and, and we can, I think the way we have these lined up is, is ideal because next we'll hear from the attorney, Peter Nichols, and some of the, the questions that are, that may be bubbling up in our mind
Yeah.
Would be good for him and we might bring you back, okay? If that works.
Did I go over 10?
If we're asking questions, we're not worried about that. All right. We have attorney Peter Nichols joining us by video. And Mr. Nichols, good to have you here this evening. Thanks for joining us. We'll give you the floor to talk about the legal aspects of this. Please, sir.
Thank you very much for allowing me to participate via Zoom. I've got a short PowerPoint and hopefully I will be able to share that with you. Will you be able to see it?
Probably. Start sharing and we'll let you know. Yes, we're, we're seeing your screen.
What are you seeing?
We see Y conservation easements, which looks like
Okay.
Slide there.
Do you see conservation easements and land trusts?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Okay. So I want to talk a little bit about conservation easement and land Chairman Pipkin did a very good job of giving background on what's going on. I want to give you a little bit more detail about what we're talking about here from a legal point of view. And then I understand that Mr. Davis and Ms. Hughes will follow up and give more details about the REPI and R C C P grants. I purposely have kept this pretty short and pretty general, so I'm just going to walk through it. And this is very basic. Many of you may also already understand this, but just in case, what is a land trust? It's a nonprofit corporation for, for public benefit. The nonprofit status must be approved by the Internal Revenue Service, which means that the trust's income, like grants and donations, is not taxable. A land trust is incorporated by a board of directors who oversee the formation and operation of land trust. Board of directors adopts bylaws that govern the operation of land trust, hires an executive director, that's policy, adopts a budget, adopts a, an audit plan or annual audit plan. And conservancy, you probably heard the name Okalala Land and Water Conservancy. Conservancy is just another name for a land trust. So what does a land trust do? A land trust works with willing farmers and ranchers to enter into conservation easements to conserve their land and our water resources, consistent with the farmers and ranchers' individual concerns and long-term goals for their agricultural operations. These conservation easements are not one size fits all. They are worked out individually with the individual farmer and rancher and their families. And so they have to be worked out locally with the local executive director and their staff. Why a land trust? Well, the REPI and R C C P grants to conserve the water resources of the paleo channel of the Okalala Aquifer anticipate the use of grant funds to acquire conservation easements from willing farmers and ranchers. So the conservation easements are really the mechanism to protect the long-term viability of the water resources for the use of the community in Cannon Air Force Base. A land trust is the most common type of organization created to work with farmers and ranchers to conserve their land and our water using conservation easements. Why a local land trust or a conservancy? Chairman Pipkin mentioned that we had talked to some other land trusts, the Development Committee and others, and found them sort of wanting. A local land trust will share the values and goals of the farmers and ranchers whose conservation easements can be funded by REPI and R C C P grants. A farmer or rancher is interested in encumbering their land and their waters, making a perpetual decision. Conservation easements last forever about their private property and about its use for agricultural operations that will go on indefinitely. The farmer or rancher is more likely to make this commitment with an organization they trust, typically a local land trust with staff who they can get to know their goals, their concerns, and work with them to tailor an individual conservation easement or easements that meets their needs and objectives for their future agricultural operations. Why conservation easements? Well, conservation easements are the legal mechanism that were chosen by the REPI and R C C P grants and their agencies to implement the goals of conserving the water in the Okalala Aquifer. Conservation easements are also the legal mechanism recognized by the state of New Mexico that encumber the future use of private land or water resources for conservation. Conservation easements also can reduce federal income taxes, estate taxes, and are also eligible for New Mexico state tax credits, which could supplement the federal REPI and R C C P grants to further the goals of the conservancy to conserve the water resources in the paleo channel. So what is a conservation easement? It's a legally enforceable encumbrance of land and or water that restricts the future use of the land and or water in some manner in perpetuity. Typically, it restricts development in the future. Some of you may be familiar with homeowners or association's covenants on the use of property in its subdivision, which are kind of analogous legal instruments. For example, some homeowners do not allow certain types of businesses to be run out of homes within a particular subdivision. So that's sort of the basics of land trusts and conservation easements. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I went through that pretty quickly at a pretty high level. But I, you know, I understand your time is limited. I didn't want to get bogged down. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, I appreciate you doing it that way, Mr. Nichols, because it does give us the, the time to ask some, some questions. And I, I know we'll have a few. And commissioners, I, I guess, I guess for your, for your benefit, Mr. Nichols just talked about conservation easements. You're going to hear perhaps Mr. Davis and others talk about water rights and water easements and And the, the concept, which, you know, I'm not an expert on. Some of these folks have been talking about this for years and understand it in, in greater detail than I do. But just for your benefit, if you're confused about, okay, we're talking about a conservation easement, but we're also talking about, you know, conserving water possibly for future municipal use, certainly for possible future use at Cannon Air Force Base and, and so forth. The, the, the concept here is to put conservation easements around a section of land that, that you would not put under easements. And then you could pump water from the middle and you protect that, that would be well-filled, if you will, with the conservation easements around it. I just, I thought I would offer that and perhaps I'm the only one that, that would have needed that clarification, but I thought I would share that with you. Mr. Nichols, when we talk about, and, you know, from, from a legal perspective, when we talk about the other contracts, like I asked Chairman Pipkin about the other contracts in the proposed budget. You know, I'm, I'm in the weeds here. I know I am, but these are just questions that I know people have. So I wonder if you could kind of talk about it. Who's, who's entering into those contracts with the contractors? And are we looking out for procurement laws and, and, and all of those kinds of things? And can you, can you kind of talk about that? Would it be Central Curry entering into those, those agreements with contractors to go and do appraisals, hydrologic surveys, those kinds of things? Or would it be the newly stood up trust, once it's stood up, entering into those contracts? Can, can you kind of talk about that and how you would make sure that we look out for, for this new entity and/or Central Curry and/or the city on procurement laws and things like that?
That's an excellent question, Mr. Mayor. The contracts would be between the land trusts and various entities that provide services on an as-needed basis. For example, appraisers are usually required to be entered into a conservation easement. There usually is a, some sort of environmental consultant needed to prepare a baseline study of the property prior to a conservation easement. There are title work that needs to be done. Title company may need to do that. Conservation easements need to be drafted. Generally, a land trust has sort of a standard conservation easement document. Could be 20, 25 pages long. And then the staff works with the individual farmer or rancher to modify that to meet their various needs. An attorney usually drafts the initial conservation easement and then works with the land trust and the land owner to sort of wrap up the land trust at the end. Contracts with auditors, probably will need contracts with a mentor organization, as Chairman Pipkin mentioned. Somebody like the Texas Ag Land Trust. The land trust may need help administering both the REPI and the RCCP grants. Instead of trying to learn all of that and do it in-house, so they may want to contract with someone like the New Mexico Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts to help with the RCCP grants or another entity that has familiarity with the REPI grants to help them administer those grants. They're federal grants. They have very detailed requirements. And obviously, they need to be done accurately and correctly, or you won't get additional federal requirements. Now, we anticipate that Central Curry Water Conservancy District would have a contractual relationship with the land trust. You know, and if the county and the city put funding into this endeavor, they will have a contract with Central Curry and they can draft that what they, as they see fit in order to meet their respective procurement laws and practices and policies. And then Central Curry likewise will have a similar contract with the land trust. So does that answer your question, Mr. Mayor?
It, it does. It does. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Actually, a follow-up to, well, that did answer my question. Here's a follow-up. So the, the likelihood exists that the city could entertain a, an agreement between the city and Central Curry, which would be a government-to-government agreement. But how about the, the procurement laws related to, you know, the newly stood up trust, then going out and getting contractors to perform the appraisals and surveys and so on? Would, how would those, would the procurement laws apply there? And how, how would those contractors be selected? Would, would they have to go out for RFP? Would the trust have to go out for RFP for each of those services?
The trust will be an independent legal entity, a corporation, a nonprofit corporation, organized by and controlled by a board of directors. And, and the Development Committee is talking about a board of five to seven people right now. And they will not be subject to federal, state, or local procurement policies or laws, but they can adopt their own. I think as Chairman Pipkin mentioned already, they're intending to go out on a broad search for an executive director. I would anticipate that the land trust at times might go to a single-source contract. Appraisers are in short supply. It's very hard to get an appraiser to get on their sort of dance card and get what you need back from them in a, in a period of time. And so I would anticipate those might be single-source contracts. If they were to basically contract with Debbie Hughes' organization to help administer the RCCP grants, that would be a single-source contract. But other kinds of things certainly could be RFPs or requests for qualifications, looking at a variety of, of the mirrors and deciding what to actually adopt and hire and who and under what circumstances.
Great. Thank you for that, Mr. Nichols. You, you referenced the proposed makeup of the board trust. So once the, the trust is established, what the board would look like. And you, you jogged my memory that we had talked about seven. We've also talked about five. Help me remember, we're talking about a, a seat for the county, a seat for the city, a seat for Central Curry, Soil and Water Conservancy District.
A business owner, I think, was the fourth one that was discussed most recently. And then an agricultural producer that would be not in the Paleo Channel, but near the Paleo Channel is the fifth one.
Okay.
Is sort of a tentative discussion that, that I believe we've had.
Okay, so the, so then the, the trust potentially once stood up and easements are, are acquired, water rights are acquired, easements are held by the trust, water rights are owned by the trust. Is that right?
Easements would be acquired by the trust. They would be the grantee and they would have the right to enforce the terms of the conservation easement. As the grantee of the conservation easement, they would not own the water rights per se, but they would have an interest in the water rights. They have an encumbrance through the conservation easement on the water rights and the use of those water rights. For example, one of the options would be for the conservation easement to prohibit further or restrict further irrigation use of the water, but allow use for municipal domestic purposes. And that would make about, I don't know, 80% of the water would be conserved and 20% would be able to be used. So that would be something that could be enforced by the land trust in a court of law if necessary.
Okay, so the, the water rights would not be transferred. They would just be encumbered?
That's correct. That's a much more direct answer to your own question.
No, no, I, well, I appreciate it. So then the, so then the idea down, you know, that, that we would, you know, potentially be able to, to go and, and access that water for municipal use someday down the road, potentially bringing it into the community's water infrastructure and delivering it to end users. Then in that case, the, the trust doesn't own those water rights. We've just encumbered them. So then we would still be approaching that water right owner a second time to talk to them about their water rights, no doubt. Trying to purchase some water rights or maybe lease wet water at that point. I, okay.
That's correct.
All right.
And so that would be one of the property rights that the land owner or the water right owner would retain in the conservation easement would be the right to either sell that water for municipal use or lease it for municipal use. And that's how the city or its water provider or Cannon Air Force Base could acquire the right to use that water in the future.
Okay, very good. Appreciate that. And then I've got one more question and then I'll, I'm sure commissioners may have, may have some questions or maybe I've talked too much and they don't have any now. But I think it, it was at our last working committee meeting, we, we invited the New Mexico Land Conservancy in to, to basically interview them about, you know, their ability to, to serve as the trust. Rather than stand up a newly formed land trust locally. Instead, you know, the idea that we would, you know, use the New Mexico Land Conservancy through an agreement with them and, and let them do the easement, easement acquisition and, and servicing and all of those things. And, and, you know, and I appreciated you on that. I was actually, I, I think I was outnumbered on the working committee when I suggested or asked that we do that, that we at least explore that option. And I appreciated your willingness to do that and your, you formulated a bunch of questions for them to consider ahead of time and so forth. And, and if you remember, after they were, after Mr. Wilber and Mr. Troy were dismissed, I asked you, you know, Mr. Nichols, did you hear anything from them today that, you know, highlighted something for you or, or changed your mind about, about anything? And, you know, what were your thoughts at that time about us potentially using them instead of forming a new land trust? And, and, and you indicated that you thought it might be a good idea to engage them at least for the near future, for a short period of time, maybe some number of years while we were getting going or something like that. Can you speak to that? And do you still kind of feel that way or have you changed your mind about that? Where, where are you on that now?
So I think my thought, Mayor Morris, was that because of their experience with REPI grants in the bombing range and also in White Sands, it might be useful to contract with them to help implement the REPI grant. Not to actually hold the conservation easements or negotiate the conservation easements, but just to provide these technical services in terms of sort of grant administration, if you will, to help do that particular part of the responsibility of the land trust in order to be entirely copacetic in terms of how the money is spent under the REPI grants that the Air Force has obtained and made available.
Great. Thank you. I, I appreciate you, you clarifying that. And I think that's, that's all of the questions that I had. Are there questions?
If I could just add one thing.
Oh, yes, sir.
I think there was, you know, some sentiment that maybe they weren't the right kind of fit in terms of just using them as a land trust. But what I just described to you, I did follow up with them after that meeting and they are quite willing to entertain doing that on a contract basis with the local land trust, should you all go ahead and form one.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that. Commissioners, do you have questions for Mr. Nichols? Looks like we've, we've covered it for now. You're, you're not going anywhere, are you? You'll hang around in, in case we have a question for you later, correct?
I have another town council meeting at 7:00 PM, but I'm guessing you'll be tired and hungry by then and you'll be, this will be over.
Let's hope. Let's hope. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Appreciate that very much.
I'll be here.
All right. Very good. Commissioners, next in the lineup is Mr. Jeff Davis. Tell us about his work on the REPI application. Mr. Davis, thank you for your time and for being here.
Always, sir.
And we'll give you the floor.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jeff Davis. I am the point of contact to Cannon Air Force Base for the readiness and environmental protection integration proposal. What is that? The Department of Defense realized the necessity to try to get out in front of two things, encroachment and resilience. Encroachment is what we are working at the Melrose Air Force Bombing Range to protect our flight paths, our microwave signals. And then secondary is what we are doing now, which is resilience. And so in order to maintain our, our capabilities at Cannon Air Force Base, the Trinity Report was requested by Air Force Special Operations Command in 2012. And in that report, it suggested that, hey, we, we are 100% behind Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority development and the pipeline coming out of Yute Lake. However, we encourage you to continue to seek alternate water resources. And inside of that envelope is local landowners, several of which are, have been 100% available to our, our meetings, our development for the land and water conservancies. And I, I think that sends a very strong message. And so the resilience part is capturing the water, holding the water, and then making sure that we have the availability. Now, data suggests three years ago, we had 10 years' worth of water. If we continue to, to push agriculturally the 93% water pool out of the Ogalala Aquifer. So we're, we were already three years into this when we were asked to, hey, you need to, we would like to develop a readiness and environmental protection integration proposal for water. Okay? So we did that. And not only did we do that, but we got the attention of the Office of the Secretary of Defense. And we've already been awarded $1.368 million. What made that better? Our relationship with the Regional Conservation Partnership Program, who came over the top with $6.911 million and then pushed us into what some would consider an unenviable position, but not in Jeff's, not in Jeff's opinion. Because what does that mean? REPI requires matching dollars, $50, $50. So does RCCP. And so what that meant is now that the Department of Defense, we have to figure out where the next $5.4 or $5 million is going to come from. I had this conversation with San Antonio. Justin Rose is our subject matter expert. And he suggested to me on Friday, when we were actually having the same conversations with the Marine Installations Command, NAVAC, Navy facilities, as well as Army, to continue to highlight what goes on in the rest of the world while everybody else is doing their own thing. Oh, by the way, we're doing this water security endeavor. And so, and doing that was, how do we get the next $5.4 or $5 million? We're going to do another proposal. And when I say we, I mean me. But the language is already there. We already have the development. We already have the identified land. We already know, short of having a hydrologist come out, what that's, you know, where we think the, the main major yield contributors are for the water wells and what we would want to encumber and then what we need to protect around that encumbrance. So that, yeah, so that land and that, that water, we've, we've already mapped it. We're working on what we call the encroachment management agreement right now, which is the legal document that we operate off of. And our Secretary of the Air Force's General Counsel is on board and for the majority understands we're still working out some language to make sure that we're all on the same page. And in fact, with Debbie and Peter on the line, we're, we will be going after, we'll be sitting down with the SAVGCN Council to make sure that we all understand the language, why we have said what we want to say in certain ways and then what the understanding of that is. Because, was there an attorney in the room? Are you in the attorney? In this particular instance, we, there, there is a black and white approach from that 80,000-foot level that we are having a difficulty helping to understand what exactly we're trying to accomplish. Why is that? Because nobody's ever done this before. They told us the same thing about Mafford. Nobody's ever done that before, but we did it. We did it successfully and we're still working. It's a five-year process. We're doing the same thing with water. We're entering into an environment where nobody's been before, but we'll do it. We're successful and we'll continue to be. And it's five-year money. And we'll work through that from, from now, from the, from the initial onset, that $1.368 million. So we have, we have $8.2 million in our, in our pocket. And to Mr. Pipkin's point, we, we have to go back after the $5.45 million, which will put us over $13 million. And that is probably 40% of the estimates of what we think it's going to take front to back. You know, because we bandy about dollars. So with $13 million, probably isn't 50%, but it's pretty close. And then so what, what, how do you go after more money? Well, we, we spend what we have and we do it effectively. And in the, and in the best interest of what our objective is, which is to conserve water. And then in doing that, once we execute those dollars and we've shown what the outcome of the execution of those dollars is, then we go back to DOD until we fund the entirety of this process. We identified all of the land. In fact, I've been asked to step outside the initially identified land to look at any other additional water sources in the surrounding area and, and include those. So that if we were to go- So that if we were to go back, they are, the maps are already in front of us. We already know the, the distances, proximities, capabilities. The city in a good faith measure already went and, and spoke to Mr. Schnell and Mr. Wall. And we used that good faith measure when we did the repi proposal for securing, so purchased the land, severed the water from the land and then hold the water. And in that water support agreement gave the landowners the opportunity, sorry, gave the landowners. Landowners consented to allow, hey, you'll, you can take 80%, we'll hold 20%. So, yeah, so, yeah, repi in a nutshell is the resilience. We went after that for the water. That was a transition that's been known for way before 2009, when, when the Omnibus Act was created and Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority took off, that there was a necessity for us to address water. And we talked a lot about it. We never physically did anything. And we're at the, we're at the driving point now. We have, we have money in our possession. We have landowners in our midst who, who understand generationally what will happen. If we don't figure this out, then generationally becomes a moot point. That term doesn't exist. We don't want that to happen. We want to be able to protect and preserve. And so that is how the development of the easements are going to come about. I'd like to backtrack a little bit into Mr. Pickens was talking about funding. So repi will fund all things tied to the easement. To include appraisals. I have a, I can get a hydrologist. We can carry that heavy load. What we can't do is pay for salaries, executive salaries, if there's an executor. I can't pay for offices. I can't pay for those general business ventures. But I can, I can pay for anything tied to the development, execution, holding of the easement. So our preference is, and I've talked to, actually talked to the Office of Economic Adjustment, no longer called that anymore. They're called OCC now, which is, that being said, I don't remember what that acronym stands for. So I refer back to the Office of Economic Adjustment. Why is that important? Because that conversation stemmed from the ability to get a grant. And if I can get that grant, then I can get money through the OEA to fund a hydrologist. And I can put them on staff with the Soil and Water Conservation District to work directly for us for the duration of the time of the money, which the number I don't know because I don't know how much I'm going to get. I guess it depends on how positive my case is. But we would, obviously we would run that for as long as we could. Or if we were in a very fortunate place, until we no longer require the services. That's, that's the most enviable. And we have hydrologists in the local area that are familiar with what water, water availability is probably is not as far back as maybe even 2017 or 2018. Blake probably knows that off the top of his head. And then, yeah, so the availability of that, of that money. So we prefer to, to keep the targeted money, repi, closehold to spend it as much as possible, put it on the ground, make it the most effective use of that money. RCPP has its own method. Debbie Hughes, who, yeah, I can't say enough about the people who do these things every day for a living. Soil and Water Conservation District, Debbie Hughes, New Mexico Associates Conservation Districts. Yeah. Peter is an amazing attorney who does this all day long, every day in, in Colorado. So and then all the folks on the, on the county board and out of the city who was entertaining this conversation with us. So I think I covered everything. I might've done that at rapid speed, but if you've got any questions, fire away.
I'm sure we do have questions. Commissioners, do you have questions?
Mayor, I have a question. Oh, go ahead.
Commissioner Lovett, go ahead.
I mean, you mentioned half. So are we saying that this money will purchase half of these easements that we're talking about? Or what is that half?
No, sir. The half is, are you, are you referencing a 50-50 split?
Right. Well, you're, you, you said it's about half of what you said.
So the amount of money that we believe it's going to take to completely fulfill this endeavor could be upwards of 40 million dollars. It's, that's an estimate, rough order of magnitude. So, so I use that in context with, if I, if I go back and I can get DOD through a separate proposal to match the RCPP dollars, now we find ourselves with 13 million, 13 million executable dollars on the ground. Percentage wise, what is that? But I don't know. It's probably 40, 45% depending on which estimate you look at. So that, that was the reference.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Answers that. Commissioner Paula, did you have a question?
Mr. Davis, help me explain again the dollars here. You said, and I see in the application here that has Central Curry already been awarded the 1.368 million?
We do have that money, yes ma'am.
Okay. And the 6.911 million, that's, where, where did that come from?
Regional Conservation Partnership Program.
Okay, so the RCPP. And that has already been received also?
So not in our possession. So I'll let Debbie probably speak to that more eloquently. But so that money I think follows, once we get into the easement production capability, we know where we're going to spend that money, then that money will follow. It, it may take us a year to get there. But that's okay. We don't lose this money. Like our money is good for five years, just like RCPP is.
So then, and correct me if I'm wrong, then in order to receive the additional 5.45 million, you have to have the RCPP grant?
No, ma'am.
But awarded? I, I'm confused on what you're saying.
So sorry about that. No, so what happens is, once the repi proposal is created, it says we must have a matching contributor. So we have a matching contributor, but our matching contributor did us a great service and came way over the top of what the Department of Defense initially provided us as incentive, kick the door down, get started dollars. So the difference between what we were originally given and what was, what was supposed to be matching dollars is now RCPP gave 6, 6.9 million dollars. We have to go from 1.3 to 6.9 as matching money. So the DOD now has a responsibility to find this matching dollars, which is 5.45 million dollars. So how do we get that? My folks in San Antonio said we're going to create another proposal. Okay. And so that proposal then will go back to the Office of the Secretary of Defense to be reviewed against this current effort. And then we'll look to gain that 5.5 million dollars.
So we have to get the 5.5 from the DOD in order to receive the grant money?
No, ma'am. That, that grant money that's already been authorized is already ours.
The, the 6.9?
On both sides, yes ma'am. That's already our money. What we're doing is, we're, is the accountability piece of it. DOD knows, hey, if, if, so let's say for instance, if we, we, the Air Force, DOD said, hey, we're going to give you 15 million dollars. And RCPP said, hey, I can only do 10, then we would have to go back after the, an additional 5 million dollars through the RCPP or another matching contributor. Could be Fish and Wildlife, could be any number of other environmental organizations that are, that are lined up behind efforts like this.
Mr. Davis, you talk about that you've already, already kind of mapped an area. And is that based upon preliminary hydrologic surveys? Or is that based upon, you referenced the Trinity Report? Is it, where, how, how did you identify the landowners that are listed in the encroachment application?
Yes, it's through past hydrology reports.
Past hydrology reports?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Very good. So talk about a little bit, if you would, about what, what, what success would be or what failure might look like from the repi side. And what I mean by that is, we've talked about identifying, you know, where the best water is. And encumbering, not purchasing those water rights, but encumbering those, those water rights and then surrounding that with conservation easements. And just to frame the question, what would, what would success look like? And, and what if you don't get easements all the way around the identified encumbered water rights?
Yeah, I, you know, that's a great question. And I think that's a challenge that we're, we're probably going to run head on into. Like I said, we, we have landowners that are very interested in the, in our success because our success is us. Like this is not a city, this is a county, this is not the base. This is all of us inclusive as a single identified effort to conserve water. And then how is the water, how best to conserve that water? And then how best to distribute the water? Should the water need to be used on a secondary effort? Now, we'll take that back to Utte Lake and the Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority and that pipeline. And its availability to pull the amount of water that is suggested. Utte Lake hasn't met its full yield reserve in 20 years, one time in 20 years.
And what do you mean by that? I mean, what?
So 220,000 acre feet a year. It's met it, it's met it once. So I think the idea was, yeah, so I, I'm not going to get into what I think the idea was. I, I think the concern is, as it continues to get drier, we know that the, that the meridian is shifting. We know that drought has been a 10, 20-year problem that the water availability that's going to come out of Utte Lake is not going to produce what was originally speculated back at the time that it was created.
And what do you base that on?
The reports that I've read that say that specifically.
There's 145,000 acre feet of storage in the reservoir today. And the, the total annual reservation amount of the authority members is 16,415 acre feet. Because of a rain over Memorial Day, the, the reservoir has increased by something like 12,000 acre feet in the last month. So I just don't, I don't, when we say that it won't produce what, what we thought it would, I just don't understand what that's based on.
Yeah, that's based on the 30-year data of Utte Reservoir. And production capabilities and what was available. And then, you know, what you, what, what Utte Lake owes the Texas Compact. And then who comes first? You take our water off the top and then shoot what's left to Texas.
Yeah, Texas is owed what, what goes over the spillway. So but well, let's, let's focus on, on, on the repi application or on this, this discussion. Alternate water sources in order to increase our rate of success. I am on board. Everyone is on board conceptually. You bet. We, we need to conserve groundwater. So you've said, I've heard you say, and, and I was hoping you'd hit on it this evening, and I'll, I'll just invite you to hit on it. But you're, you're bringing all of this money from the government to, to our area in, in order to, to help us conserve groundwater in our area, no doubt for the benefit of Cannon Air Force Base. But you've also said, and I believe it's in the encroachment agreement, that it's for the benefit of the surrounding area.
Correct.
Yeah. Which is, which is fantastic. I mean, what a, what a winning situation for, for our community to be in. And, and is it?
Agreed.
Is it, yeah. Is it left just, just that simple? Or is there a minimum amount that Cannon needs to say is available to, to Cannon at some point? I mean, is there, is there an obligation through all of this to, to say that X amount could be delivered to Cannon? Or is it just as simple as, hey, this is for everyone's benefit, including Cannon?
Okay, so how to address that? The best, the best way to address that is Cannon Air Force Base through repi has a single request. We must, if we have to, and request water, be able to be provided water. If we run into a situation where our wells no longer produce, or our wells don't produce the same capacities, we now reach a saturation point where we cannot pump as much as we are using, we find ourselves in the, in the need position. And so that water availability that's right outside running southeast to northwest, we will need access to that water. So how best to get access to that water? Well, we have a pipeline pull off of Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority. So that's the secondary effect to what's best for Cannon. And the third for what's best to Cannon is to secure water resources in the outlying areas. So do we get the tertiary benefit? Absolutely. But for, but for repi to enter into this, it must be understood that if Cannon Air Force Base says I need water, we must have the availability of that water. We won't have the availability of that water if we don't do what we're doing now.
Appreciate that answer. And perhaps this question is, is really maybe to back up and, and address to Peter, I'll throw it at you. If, if the water rights are, are only encumbered, not secured, how is it then, you know, is, is it the work of the trust? And, and I know that the former mayor is, is coming up to summarize, but I mean, is it the work of the trust? How? There must be a purchase agreement in place in, in order for us to be able to say, or anyone to be able to say that these water rights that we've gone and encumbered but not secured are going to be available for Cannon if Cannon needs it, right? Or it's sort of another step down the road.
That, that'll be part of the, that'll be part of the cost of overseeing the easements is the monitoring of it.
Well, again, the easements are just surrounding the water. And if, if, if Cannon needs the water available, should, you know, should they, should they need it and they need to order it? But we have no purchase agreement. We've just encumbered. We've, we've conserved the water. But we've, we've only encumbered it. We didn't secure the right. We can't just go take it. We would still have to go broker a deal with the, the holder of that water right. And so and I'm down in the weeds, but I was just curious about that.
No, it's, it's okay. And I'm not the legal mind in this. And Peter probably can't answer it better. But I would tell you that what I understand is, is that when we, when we encumber that high-yield water along the most highly identified areas of the Paleo Channel, the outlier, outlier wells will rise. And it is that 20% that will be available at the landowner's discretion. Yeah, to help us with. So that's a, for Cannon Air Force Base, that's, that's a third order effect.
Okay, okay. Very good. And have any other questions bubbled up?
Jeff, I, I do have one. Your thoughts, what percentage of landowners need to participate in this program to make this successful?
Preference or what do I think is the most successful?
What do you think is the most?
I think that everybody that we've identified is a very, is, is probably in the direct path, either directly on or in close proximity to the identified heavy water areas. And the right responsible thing to do is bring them all in. Now, can we do that? My hope so, yeah, absolutely. And, and so the dollar amounts might fluctuate and maybe we need to go after more money. Maybe we need to tailor the right incentives. Maybe we need to look for those tax breaks. The, there are environmental concerns that we haven't even addressed. In fact, one of which is the lesser prairie chicken migrates along the same route is now back on the endangered list. We haven't even gone after the fish and wildlife for, for thoughts about that. So when we talk about an executive position for the land and, land and water conservancy, that person probably takes a great deal of weight off of people like Rachel Thompson and and the remainder of the New Mexico Associates Conservation District, Debbie Hughes, who is just amazing contributor to all the things I didn't know a year ago when I started this. Yeah. So what's the, yeah, backtrack. What's the answer? Yeah, all in. I, I think we, we require all. Because that, that identified hemisphere kind of area is, is the, is that largest water resource. And then it not only protects that water, but it protects the people around it. So the most important part of that is, is, is the availability and/or opportunity of someone potentially not inclusive in this run who sees that we have held that water in position. And then the water levels start to rise. And we have decided that over here, outside of this line, we are going to, we're going to reengage pivot irrigation. And we do not want to undermine the efforts and the sacrifices of those who are willing to come to the table and talk about what we're doing and enter into easements with us in perpetuity without ensuring that we've successfully protected that. Does that answer your question?
It is, thank you.
Commissioner, you had a question?
Along that same line, is there a strategy that you're going to go after to encumber certain water rights that are better than others? So there is?
First, we have to go back out and verify the, through hydrologist, where the highest yield water wells are. We think we know that, but that, that information is four years old. So before we go any further, we need to validate that.
And once the water rights are encumbered by the landowner, the only use other than municipal use is domestic, correct?
Yes.
They can't water cattle or anything with it?
No, that's not true.
What's not true? They can't or can water?
They can.
They can use it for cattle?
Yes.
Is it limited to a certain number of head?
No, so the so the change comes from agriculture's three acre feet to commercial, which is one point two nine. And this is considered commercial under that use. And so that's the, not eighty twenty, but that's kind of where the eighty twenty formula came from. And I have a great deal of math on that, if you'd like to sidebar it sometimes.
Okay, well, uh Mr. Davis, I've heard you present on this several times. And you've you've put a tremendous amount of work into it to include presenting on it a bunch of times. So thank you for 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 sharing it, sharing with us what what you have this evening. And I think it really helps our commission to understand, you know, what what it is that's taking place and 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 start to visualize how it is that we we could support. Because we certainly support our our friends and neighbors out there at Cannon and want, and you know, and you you referenced some things that that have happened in the past, the property, the the water rights that have been secured adjacent to the base. Of course, the uh Utility Authority has infrastructure installed to the base so that the water can be delivered there. And so uh we we want to look for for how it is that we can, we can continue to best support Cannon and and what's important to Cannon. So so thank you for sharing with us. And uh if there aren't other questions, we'll, we'll, we'll let you uh step aside and we'll hear from Ms. Debbie Hughes.
Okay, just one last thing. If everybody doesn't know Mr. Masters, who's the face of Cannon Air Force Base, especially now because Brigadier General Select Masidas is on his way out, Colonel Taylor, I'm not sure has arrived, but in case Mr. Masters would like to add anything to this conversation.
Oh, thanks.
Would like to add one thing. So I'm I'm Rick Masters. I'm the Director of Staff out at, out of Cannon Air Force Base. And I do appreciate the words, Mayor, on the the community's desire to support the base. I will tell you how this project initiated uh was a little bit reversed. It was actually, we had just gotten started with the repi program out at Maffer and getting that in its first year of execution. And it was the city and the county that came to the base and said, hey, we we see this thing you're doing out at the range with with repi. Is that something we could use to address our water issues in the local community? So it was you guys that came to us. So you're not supporting a base initiative. The base is actually uh taking advantage of an idea that you guys, you guys put on the table. And then we were able to take it to OSD and they actually saw the value in it and decided to move forward with it.
Yeah, pre- appreciate you.
So I appreciate that.
Yeah, appreciate you pointing that out and and it is a great partnership that we have. And and uh thanks for being here, Mr. Masters. All right, next, let's hear from Ms. Debbie Hughes. Ms. Hughes, if uh you can hear us, we'll give you the floor and we appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and um commission members. And um I uh just wanted to know, I've been working with Jeff for over a year and that's the first time I saw what he looks like. And I have to see him, I'm in Colorado on vacation and he's in Clovis. So it's really interesting how these virtual meetings have changed our life. But um I want to first of all say that I really recognize and appreciate that the whole Clovis area is truly a rural economic, it's an, it totally depends on agriculture. I know this from working with USDA for the last thirty some years through the conservation districts that our busiest field offices in the state have always been Clovis and Brutalus. And so now it just breaks my heart to hear that this aquifer is declining and and you really are at a critical stage. And um we're just happy that we've been able to come together. So I'm going to talk a little bit about this, but just want to let you know that as an ag producer myself, we want to do all we can do to protect that rural economy. And we want to do all we can do to help with the lifetime investments that those farmers and ranchers have made with their, on their water and their land, because I I know very well all about that. So um the New Mexico Association of Conservation Districts is a nonprofit. Some like what you would relate to as the municipal league. Our members are the Soil and Water Conservation Districts. So Central Curry is one of our our member districts. And there was some discussion earlier about procurement. Central Curry, of course, does have to comply with all of the Open Meetings Act, the Procurement Code, audit, all of those things, just like anybody else does. And I think um Peter mentioned that that nonprofits don't necessarily have to. But having said that, um I'm just finishing up a a six month audit for our nonprofit. And anytime you handle uh even over half a million dollars of federal money, you have to go through a big fed, full, single federal audit, which is is very, very burdensome. And they will get your internal and external and everything else. So I think that we could be assured that uh the new, this new land trust is set up. There will be, still be a lot of accountability for these taxpayer dollars, even even as a uh nonprofit. So um USDA, NRCS, or Natural Resource Conservation Service, they're the ones that actually get to decide if and when the land conservancy and new land conservancy has enough experience. And in some of the meetings I've had within the last few weeks, it isn't really a magic number, like ten um contracts. It it could um be less than that if if this new land trust is able to hire somebody with experience, somebody who's already worked for some kind of entity that did easements. Because if you look at the rules, the first thing you're going to see is, oh, well, government entities can hold these land trusts. Why do we need it? Why do we need land trusts? Or nonprofits can can hold these easements. Why do we need a land trust? But as you read on down the rules of any of these USDA easement programs, it gets very particular about having to have this experience, having to be able to make sure that you can um come up with all the the compliance requirements and those kind of things. So I want to let you know, so this repi that's almost seven million dollars has been awarded to NMACD, working with the Central Curry Soil and Water District. They were going to apply themselves, but there was a lot of red tape to jump through with the USDA portal. But anyway, so we've done it on their behalf. There is absolutely not one penny of administrative dollars that can come out of that, even for our state association, uh for applying for it or for managing it. And now that we, we have started this, we we are responsible, as soon as we sign a contract, which still could take months, um to actually comply with quarterly reports and all kinds of other things. Now, one of the things that our state association does do that won't cost the county, the city or the land trust or anybody else any additional dollars is out of this almost seven million dollars, about a million of that will be not for easements. It will be spent for other kinds of conservation work that can be done on these farms. For example, if a farmer is going to take out their sprinklers, they can still do dry land farming. If they are going to not be irrigating, they can still run cattle. And so to do that, there's going to be other things that need to happen, like possibly planting some other crops or brass lands, uh fencing, these kind of things. So this other a million dollars, part of this million dollars is um for those kind of practices. So the the agreements themselves for this money, this money will not come directly through our state association, but it actually comes to New Mexico NRCS. And then the um the landowners themselves will be the ones that have the contracts with USDA in conjunction with the land trust. There is some funding in this contract, since we were the ones that applied for it, that we can negotiate uh to help with technical assistance. In other words, um we we have, some of you know, some retired NRCS folks that work for my state association that actually are the ones that that did this proposal for us. But they are, they um will also be able to work with those farmers to do like conservation plans, possibly help with their H E L or highly erudible land plans that will be required, checking out, you know, some of the practices that are put in, helping measure them, those kind of things. So we we wouldn't need any extra money from the city or county to help with these technical services. We would automatically be doing that through however much money that is negotiated between us and NRCS to help with those kind of things. Yeah, so I'm trying to look here. I made a few notes here trying to make sure. Oh, so in addition to this almost seven million dollars, there is a good possibility that we could just, without having to compete, once we spend this money, get it obligated, we can just ask USDA for additional funding. We've already done this and been successful with two other RCPPs in New Mexico. So we know that this is a possibility, so that we might not be limited to the seven million. It could be ten or twelve or fifteen million. In addition to that, the other thing that I think you need to take into consideration is there's a couple of other easement programs that NRCS has that are available now. And they can actually supplement or bring in additional easement dollars on top of that. Now, the RCPP money is limited, because the way we wrote the proposal, to only these lands that are within this map um and to those landowners that are within this Paleo Channel. But having said that, these other um easement programs that are available could could be anywhere. They could be outside of there, you know, any different direction for that. So um but I do want to say that um you guys, I think it's um really been great to have Cannon work on this. Because as we started this process, I was told by several people in other states that have done repi, there's no way Cannon can do this, um because no air force or no base, military base, period, can have more than one repi of two different types. And the Cannon Air Force Base and Jeff and folks um were able to convince the people at the upper level how important this was. And um one of the things I found out with USDA is they really do like to match repi dollars. So when there's repi things that are awarded, you're, I think that's one reason we were more, you know, we that we were saying, I think, I think we received the fifteenth highest um award in the nation with this, with this um amount that we received. So that's saying a lot. And then one more thing I just want to add is um that I've been serving on the Water Trust Board for the last six or seven years and with the prior governor before that. And um I've always supported the pipeline. But let me tell you why, guys. You're out of time and we need to use all the tools in the toolbox. And so I know a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for three years sounds like a lot of money. But compared to the millions of dollars that all of us in the state that care about New Mexico are bringing to the table, I don't think it should be too hard of a decision for you to s- to get on board and get behind this. So thank you very much, and I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Appreciate that, Ms. Hughes, and appreciate your um your continued support of Eastern New Mexico and and um and our, our addressing our water concerns. And thank you for your time this evening. Commissioners, do you have questions for Ms. Hughes? It appears you did so so good that that there aren't any questions. But uh appreciate your time and and your explanation uh about your your involvement in this, your partnership in this, and the things that you bring to the table from your organization. And again, thank you for supporting Eastern New Mexico.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Lansford. Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh I appreciate uh being involved continually in this this effort that quite frankly began about twenty-five years ago. When I was mayor in nineteen ninety-six, it was a couple of years after that that Duke Energy came to town and and wanted to build a power generation facility. And it was going to create jobs and stimulate the economy. And they did a water study and called me into the office with the city manager and and wanted to give us the bad news that that water situations in this area are not good for a long-term industry. So shortly after that, uh I got involved in the Ute Water Project that was being run by EPCOG. And Mayor Ortega and I uh felt like it was important for the local jurisdictions to to take control of that and take it away from EPCOG. And that was done. And basically, ten years later, the project got authorized. I wasn't mayor at the time. Mayor Brumfield was mayor in two thousand and nine. I left office in oh eight, and it was authorized the very next year. But until we got to that point, uh the uh the federal government said, sure, we'll we'll participate in an authorization. But you've got to be good stewards with the water that you have. So when you go home, you know, tell your folks that we're going to support this effort and we will authorize it, but you're going to have to be good stewards. That's when the reused project was born, was after that discussion. So what were we going to do to be good stewards of our water supply here? That's when EPCOR, then New Mexico American, and the city joined forces to have certain designations on watering days. And so we became good stewards. I left office and uh knew that this whole Ute Water Project was uh a very long, long-term project. You know, when it got authorized in oh nine, it was thought, well, maybe this will be twenty years and we'll get it done. Well, it looks like it's going to be thirty at best and maybe forty. Who knows? If you look at historical funding, you'll see that, you know, expectations have never been met. And so it takes time to build projects like this. And so uh as I was out of office and uh, you know, there toward that four-year period that I was out of office, I complimented the city on their conservation efforts, but nothing was being done to conserve water from the ninety-three percent user. And that was mainly the reason I ran for office again in two thousand and twelve. It's because I didn't believe the Ute Water Project was going to happen quick enough or at all. And I felt like that we needed to have some kind of effort outside the city of Clovis to conserve water, where ninety-three percent of the water is being used. And so I became interested in uh this conservation easement idea, uh inexpensive way, if you will, or a discounted way of taking water and conserving it. And uh as that went along and and time passed, you know, we put in a couple of applications. And Debbie Hughes helped us with those to try to get irrigators to turn their wells off and not irrigate as much. And we didn't put any skin in the game, and so we were really, you know, uh hoping for something that couldn't happen. And so then, again, time continued to pass and uh went to uh City Commissioner Ladonna Clayton and asked her if she would lead the effort to do a water assurance plan for the city of Clovis, to come up with a real concrete plan on how we're going to assure our citizens that we're going to have water moving forward. And so that was done. It it took several months uh to complete that document. A lot of hard work went into that. You know, the people that worked on that uh, you know, will forever deserve accolades. And so part of that was, you know, like Jeff Davis said, to establish the land conservancy or land trust and to try to find in a strategic location the best place to save groundwater for future municipal use. And so as, you know, Rick Masters said, you know, we discovered the repi program because we thought initially when we were going to do conservation outside the city, it was going to be all on the city's pocketbook. Okay, there wouldn't be any assistance for that. And it was frightening to many people when you talk about forty million dollars to conserve groundwater. But then when repi came along and we thought, hey, this is a real opportunity to get federal dollars that we can leverage against. And then RCPP came along and the one-to-one match became, hey, this is great. The city doesn't have to come up with that forty million dollars. Maybe that'll come all from the federal, and all we have to provide is administrative expenses to make sure that these dollars are put to use correctly. And the idea was, you know, to find a strategic location close to Cannon. And we didn't have to look for that. The the Trinity Report did it for us. When I got in office in two thousand and twelve, Commander Buck Elton called me to the base, handed me the Trinity Report. He said, this really isn't for public information, but if you need it for your work, you know, use it all you want. It was frightening. Cannon was concerned about groundwater supplies and the timeline for the Ute Water Project to come on board. And they listed a number of alternatives in that study on what we ought to do. And quite frankly, that's all we've done, is we've followed the recommendations of the Trinity Report and to try to secure groundwater proximal to Cannon Air Force Base. And so, you know, a lot of these things that have happened over the last twenty-five years, you know, unfortunately, I've been involved in them. And I feel like the rat in the cage that just keeps running and the cage keeps turning and nothing really gets happening, okay? And so I looked back at Jeff Davis's shirt and it says Trail of Tears. And it has been. It's been a trail of tears. It's been a trail of tears because nobody wants to tell the public that we really do have a serious water supply issue. Nobody wants to talk about it because it'll damage economic development opportunities. And I understand that. And we're still okay, but we need to act. The time to act was really a few years ago when the water assurance plan was first done. But fortunately, you know, REPI came along and has saved in the local communities millions of dollars to secure groundwater. And the other reason why I've been so passionate about this groundwater issue is, again, what Jeff Davis said and what the data will show is that your reservoir would not have been able to provide the sixteen-point-four acre-feet of water per year without getting below the minimum pool. And in two thousand and nine, I was chairman of the Yew Water, I'm sorry, two thousand and thirteen, I was chairman of the Yew Water Commission. And I asked the Yew Water Commission to consider an update to the firm annual yield study because I wanted to convince people that we can't put up all of our eggs in the Yew Water basket. We have to have groundwater sources and surface water sources. And I'm all for the Yew Water Project heavenly days. I mean, I've been working on it for twenty-five years. But the interim groundwater project offered relief in the interim until we get there. And that was the whole purpose of my drive to get this water supply and to get the interim groundwater project built so that we can start delivering water several years, maybe decades, before we get to the reservoir because we need it. We're not doing it for the fun of it. We need it. I've talked to Daniel Baylet, used to be on the New Mexico American Board when I wasn't mayor, and then on the EPCOR Board, and then I resigned to run for mayor again. But water supply is very, very critical to EPCOR right now. Right now, they're cherry picking. They don't have a regional source of water that they can look at and say, hey, you know, here is a large well field that we can rely on. They're cherry picking, adding it to their infrastructure. And so, to me, this project represents tremendous economic sustainability for this region. If you look at Lake Meredith that has supplied water to Amarillo, Plainview, and Lubbock, and you look at what they used in surface water compared to what they used in groundwater over the last several years, you will see the amount of surface water hasn't been able to produce. And so, they've had to use groundwater on a massive scale for many, many years. And it's irresponsible, in my opinion, for local government to not recognize that and plan for that and be ready for that. I mean, isn't that what readiness is about at Cannon Air Force Base? Shouldn't we model that for ourselves to be ready for whatever may happen or come our way? When people came out here in the early days, what did they do? They looked for a water supply. Nobody lives where there is no water supply. That's number one. When I ran for office in ninety-six, they said, what is the most important thing about city government? Public safety was one of the answers. Water supply wasn't mentioned then. But to me today, number one issue is water supply, not water infrastructure. If you have the supply and you need it, you will spend the money to get to it. But, you know, you can build all the infrastructure you want if you don't have any supply to put in it. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I wrote some notes, believe it or not. And I think I've covered just about all of them. But the one I want to close with, two things really. And I know Mayor Morris is getting ready to go to Washington, D.C. to talk to the Bureau of Reclamation and possibly Management and Budget. But it was about, I think, October of twenty nineteen. And the commission, it was my last days as mayor. And I presented to the commission a twenty-thirty-forty proposition where the local communities would pay twenty million dollars, the state would pay thirty, and the federal government would pay forty. And to get that kind of money to accelerate the development of the interim groundwater project, get it done, get it built, make it functional. And so, we talked to Commissioner Berman repeatedly and face-to-face. I told her, I said, we have a serious groundwater supply problem that's not being addressed. And we need to build this interim groundwater system because we're working on getting a water supply to put in it so that during the interim, before we get to the reservoir, we will have a water supply that we can rely on. And the Office of Management and Budget, we told them the same story. And look what happened. We started getting more money from the Bureau of Reclamation. We built Finish Water Two. We're going to build Finish Water Three. Finish Water One is being engineered to ninety percent. We're talking to Texico. We're trying to put that interim groundwater project together. But to not have water for that, when we told the state engineer and the Bureau of Reclamation and the Office of Management and Budget that we were going to have water to put in this accelerated development infrastructure, and we're on track. The state's on track with their thirty million over three years. The fed's on track with their forty million over three years. And the city, they said, you know, we passed an ordinance that said, you know, if the state and the feds come through with the thirty and forty million, the city will impose a property tax and come up with the fifteen million and will complete a functional utility in order to deliver water earlier rather than later. So, that's where we stand. I mean, we've had great support from the state engineer. I just talked to him a couple of weeks ago with Mayor Morris on the phone and I felt like his staff was very enthusiastic. And we asked him a question. Do you support a local land trust or do you think the local community ought to go out and hire the New Mexico Land Conservancy or some other land trust? And I think I heard his words exact. He said, I always support local governance, local control. Do you remember him saying, I support local control?
Yes, sir, I do.
Local control because we're dealing with our friends and our neighbors and we know them, they know us, we build trust, and we execute on something that is a gift. This is an absolute gift to have this kind of money to put into play and all we have to do is come up with administrative dollars. Well, I think one hundred and fifty thousand from the city and the county, I think that's reasonable to start with. I don't think we're going to need that much every year, quite frankly. Not when you consider the fact that REPI dollars can be used for some administrative expenses, okay? And that wasn't talked about much, but they can be. And Jeff Davis alluded to that. And so, my suggestion is, is if we give it the college try for three years and say, we're going to, we're going to believe in this. It's like the Mayflower launching to go to the Americas. They had all their resources, they planned all their plans, they put their team together and they launched. They didn't know exactly what they were going to run into. And we don't either. We don't know every answer to every question. And it's frustrating when people ask, well, this, that, and the other, and we can't give an answer. But we do have a general concept and we want to launch the Mayflower and we want to go in that direction because it's going to benefit our community immensely, immensely. And when you look at the history of this city and what they've done to sustain this community, I'm reminded of the cheese plant. You know, ten million dollars the city put in to build a wastewater treatment plant at the cheese plant and to support the receiving of that wastewater through a pipeline as well. And so, we put ten million in for three hundred jobs, okay? We're asking the city and the county to put in one hundred and fifty thousand apiece for six thousand jobs at Cannon Air Force Base and forty thousand residents in the city of Clovis. It's a small price comparison when you look at what we've done in the past for other economic issues. And nothing is more fundamental to economic growth and opportunity than water supply. I go to Dallas, my daughter lives there. I go to Lubbock, I go to Amarillo, thriving communities in Amarillo and Lubbock and Plainview right now and in Dallas. Think about it, they have water. People are going to invest where there is a reliable water supply. And we've had it on the table for far too many years, the uncertainty of water supply. It has been a plague on my leadership in this community, a plague, a ball and chain. No other issue has dominated like water supply, not water infrastructure, water supply. And so, I'm pleading with you to please be thoughtful in your deliberations as you consider this and to embrace it enthusiastically. It really is a tremendous opportunity that no other community has this opportunity that's relying on the Ogallala Aquifer right now in this country that doesn't have a surface water. We have a surface water system as well. But, you know, we can't put all of our eggs in that basket. And we've known that from the beginning. You always have to have backup groundwater. And so, the last thing I'd like to point out, and I looked at this today, and I'm going to read this because this is who Clovis is. Submission Statement of the City of Clovis. It is the mission of the Clovis City Government to provide quality municipal services in the best, most effective, and most economical manner to operate in a spirit of cooperation and collaboration with all people in every endeavor. To expect every employee of the city to perform to the highest of their capacity and to so on and so forth. I think I said it here a few weeks ago, nothing happens great without teams. No man, no woman is an island. It takes teams to win. And we've got a great team assembled. We've got great volunteers, great citizens, great farmers, great elected officials. And so, again, I appreciate Mayor Morris so much, your leadership and your involvement in this process. And I continue to hope that we make the best decisions for our community's future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, this meeting has certainly been an example of a spirit of cooperation. I'm grateful to each of you that came and gave of your time to present, to help, to help this commission and I raise our understanding of what's being worked on. And I'm grateful, appreciate everyone's time. Commissioners, are there any last questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions, and it doesn't matter who answers. I'm assuming somebody that gave a presentation tonight. But help me understand better why it's better to form another layer of bureaucracy through forming a new trust rather than allowing an entity that already exists to handle the grant money? Because in the end, the ultimate goal is to get the money in the hands of the landowners. And I feel like the more layers we put in place, the less amount of money that will eventually get into the hands of the landowners. So, can someone help me understand? I understand local control and how that's a good thing, but I'm usually not a proponent of more bureaucracy.
Sorry. So, the short answer to that is that in order for REPI to be accepted as a proposal, we must have an eligible entity. And so, several conversations were had with several agency opportunities and nobody answered the call. And it came to my attention through folks like Debbie Hughes and Blake Prather that the Soil and Water Conservation District existed. I didn't know that. So, I sought them out and they met me on short notice and then did a follow-up emergency meeting on their own and obligated themselves to be my eligible entity, the Department of Defense's eligible entity. Now, they knew when they took that task on, two things, what the very absolute importance of what we were about to embark on was. And then, number two, they were not staffed to be able to do it. So, what was our immediate responsibility upon them saying, we're going to take this on? We had to find an execution arm. What was the best way to meet that obligation? Form a land trust. Not necessarily as another form or another layer of government, but as the execution capability of an eligible entity that entered into an opportunity at our success, knowing they were already in over their head. And so, we had a responsibility to figure out how best to help them help us help them, if that makes sense.
No, it makes sense. And I understand what you're saying, but I guess my question more is, is there not a current entity already in place such as the New Mexico Land Conservancy that can handle this without forming an entire new entity? And what's the drawback of one of those other entities? Is it cost? Does it?
Yeah, Commissioner Baya. So, we have talked to several land trusts and one of the issues we ran into, and I worked with Scott on some other things, is the New Mexico Land Conservancy, they have not dealt with what you're trying to do there. What you're trying to do there is keep water in the ground for other uses, which is a whole different arm. And we're talking about in perpetuity. So, whoever these landowners are in your local community is really not creating another level of government control like you. I'm not creating another level. It would be an equal level. It's just instead of the money going to Santa Fe, the money is going to stay in your local community. And the decisions, all the decisions that have to do with that land will be made by other local officials like yourself from your community. And that is really important. But the Taos Land Trust, they weren't interested, they work in Taos County. I got an email today from the Bolivian Ranch Trust. I reached out to them and they don't have staff, they don't have capacity. The only way they could do it is if, you know, we gave them money to hire another person, which would be the same thing you're trying to do there. So, we have looked in other places and talked to other people, but this is very unique, what you're doing with keeping up the water for other uses because that's not usually what these land trusts do.
Is there, and maybe this is a dumb question, but is there a local entity that's already in place that can handle the grant money?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, probably, you know, the most local, closest you're going to come is to the local Soil and Water Conservation District. We have some of our members who have many, many staff and who have a million dollars. Because the Central Curry has never had their own mill levy, they haven't had full-time staff, they haven't become as progressive as a lot of them. But as far as working with farmers and ranchers, working with USDA programs, the closest you're going to come to an entity like this is the Central Curry Soil and Water Conservation District, who does have the authority for land trusts, they just don't have the experience or the capacity.
Okay. And Mayor, if I may, I do have one more question, kind of along those same lines, but I struggle with kind of independence issues, I guess, between people who could potentially receive this money are also advising on the trust committee. Is that, can someone address that for me?
I could tell you that we've given great many conversations to transparency. And that transparency then is, I mean, I'm the POC and in this particular instance, the face of Cannon Air Force Base. So, it is a perception issue that we are going to stay out of the middle of. We don't want to create the idea of impropriety. So, but I'm happy to advise about the way ahead or how money is allowed to be expended. I'm not the rider of easements. I trust those to the people who do those things for a living. But even the folks that are sitting in the back of the room have intentionally kept themselves out of the center of this so that we can maintain transparencies without the idea that there is a conflict of interest.
But there are advisors on the trust board that could... Trust board that could potentially receive money from these grants, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I guess that's, I guess that's the part that bothers me a little bit because, because of an independence issue, truly.
So, okay, so I try not to go down too far down that rabbit hole, but the, the idea is that the, the advisors are just that, they're advisors. In the end, there is a board of selected individuals outside of, of anybody along that Paleo Channel who understands the larger effort and they are the voting members, regardless of whatever advice is provided to them. So I, I think if there was a, if there was a concern, it's over, it's, it's outmatched by the idea of the compilation of board members, voting board members on the land trust.
I think it's worth, we're talking about so much and we talk about the, the would-be or the newly formed land trust that hasn't been stood up yet. There's not a land trust board yet. We are talking about the working committee. And I just wanted for, for everyone that's trying to track this, the Commissioner Paula's point and question is about the working committee and of course, that was, that was the way you answered it, Mr. Davis. I just wanted to make sure everybody understands. We have advisors that have sat in the room and, and provided input and, and, and made compelling, you know, arguments and, and so forth, but to Mr. Davis's point, the folks that are voting on the working committee are not landowners and as far as I know, not related to landowners that are listed, at least in this list I see in your encroachment agreement.
Right, no, and I appreciate the clarity that this is all about the working group. I mean, we, we're not going to be advisors to the, to the land trusts and as we're asked to formulate opinions that will be used to make decisions at some point later.
And in clarifying that, I wasn't easing, or I wasn't trying to discount Commissioner Paula's concerns because I've, I have them myself. I mean, it, it, you know, it, it's concerned me too. You know, we've, we've, we've made a lot of decisions in meetings that technically, I mean, they're not closed-door meetings, but the public wasn't invited, you know, and so it, I think it's a valid concern. Yes, Mr. Nichols.
Under the Internal Revenue Code and IRS regulations, a land trust could not create any private benefit for anybody who's, who's associated with the land trust, you know, or they would lose their nonprofit status, you know? So that is inherently built in to the land trust and the operations in which it has to meet to maintain its nonprofit status with the Internal Revenue Service. It has to file a report every year, Form 990, that certifies that it does that and the land trust's board of directors will adopt bylaws and should also adopt a conflict of interest policy, which would also very explicitly prohibit that and require anybody associated with the land trust to disclose any potential conflicts of interest and totally not participate in any decisions involving that.
Thank you for that, Mr. Nichols.
Before we lose Mr. Nichols, if I can.
Yes, Commissioner Lovett.
So I, I, I think it's a, I mean, I'm, I'm a player with realizing that's part of the puzzle and, and we can't have just, it's not one piece in one puzzle. I mean, it, or, or one piece into the puzzle. I mean, we've got all these different moving pieces and I, I certainly agree and, and at the end of the day, we certainly don't want to finish it all and then have that one piece that's missing and that's, you know, we're looking all over for it and that's what we needed to really have what we needed for Clovis in particular, which is who we're representing is, is, is the citizens of Clovis. And also to think about being a good steward of that money, I, I know there was something said earlier that the state land could start with the process and then it could be transitioned into the local trust. And my, my question is why, why wouldn't that be pursued at this time? Because if you don't have a hundred percent participation in the Paleo Channel, then it doesn't work, right? So, I mean, because, because, because if you have everyone else saying, I won't, you know, I, I'll give my, my water rights up, but you have one at the bottom who's saying, you know, well, I'm choosing not to, they're going to have some bumper crops. And, and so couldn't this state land entity start with the process, make sure of how we're getting the people involved and that we're getting the take that we expect? And then at that time, could it not transfer over into the local land trust? And then I'm thinking that the city and the county would then save money, at least at the onset. And then once we know we had everything in place, I think it's great money to be spent from the city to be able to understand that we have another water source that could be put in to our infrastructure. But then at that point, has EBCOR been contacted? Are they interested in this water? Because at the end of the day, they're the ones who are responsible to provide the water to the city of Clovis. So I just want to make sure that they've been part of the, the puzzle. And I mean, there's a lot of different things going on that we need to address and I'm just trying to save as much money as possible upfront because as it's even been stated, we don't even know that the 150,000 apiece will cover the administrative costs to begin with. So that's, that's my opinion. I just, I think that there's an opportunity that we, we have here and I think we see that. I mean, it's great to have federal money into this that didn't come from any of our pockets in a sense, but I, I just want to make sure that the 150,000 that is coming out of our pockets is spent appropriately and at the right time. So that's my comment.
I don't know if that was directed to me or not, but I can offer my perspective from the interview we had with statewide land trust. And the first one is, is they don't really have the capacity to do this. What is being done here has never been done anyplace in the United States by any land trust whatsoever. They are interested in traditional land conservation. They're not particularly interested in what we're trying to do here. They don't really understand it. And rather than saving money, they would be charging and it would be just as expensive to have them do it as it would be to do it locally because there would still need to be someone locally to work with the local farmers and ranchers, someone they could trust, that they can see, that they can run into at the grocery store, at the farm supply store, the tractor store, wherever, and talk face to face. You know, and the people in the New Mexico Land Conservancy are in New Mexico and Silver City. And I don't really believe that the farmers and ranchers, based on my experience with dozens of land trusts across the West, are going to drive to Santa Fe or Silver City to have a conversation about a conservation easement. You know, if it isn't somebody local that they know, that they trust, that they can see, we're not going to end up with even one conservation easement in the Paleo Channel, let alone the orphan one that you're talking about, Commissioner. But that's my, that's my perspective. There are other members of the Development Committee who are there tonight who could add on to that.
Appreciate your comments, Commissioner Lovett, and I appreciate your perspective, Mr. Nichols. Mr. Pipkin.
The other Texas Ag Land Trust, you know, talking with them, they're very more, they're open to the discussion of what we're doing, whereas the other conservancy from New Mexico, they were just kind of closed-eared. They, they would not understand what we're trying to do. This land trust might be willing, you know, to work us in, get this established, I think. As we meet with those people, you know, we'll get a better understanding of that. But, you know, if you can't get those people to work with you and, you know, might as well set up your own, you know? That's kind of, kind of our thought process.
And Mayor, and I think we all, I mean, just so we all understand, I mean, we're, we're, we're putting the water into a, we're, we're trying to conserve it in a sense. We're, we're, we're making this reservoir of water, this groundwater. But the citizens of Clovis didn't understand, this 40 million is, is not a one-time cost for that water. That's just to save the water, hopefully save the water that we hope will be there when it's needed or, and when we tap into it. But at that time, then, and these landowners will then negotiate a rate for their water to be pumped from their land. Is that correct? And, and at this point, that would be something that would be negotiated with EBCOR, I, I would assume, since they're our water supplier. And then so, I mean, we, I just, again, it's not like this is a 40 million, one and done. And then I'm all for the landowners making their, their dollars, but we keep talking about saving the agriculture. Well, in this Paleo Channel, the agriculture will be gone. The, the labor force that we get from this land will be gone. The taxes that we have traditionally received from this land will be gone. And again, we'll, we'll receive a, a tax based on the sale of the water, but it's not like we're saving agriculture by having this land buttoned up in this reservoir. So I think that we just need to make sure we're aware of that.
Yeah, I think those are great points, Commissioner Lovett, and I appreciate your perspective, Mr. Pipkin. I, I will say though, you know, having been in the room, having been involved in the conversations leading up to the meeting with the New Mexico Land Conservancy, I don't think that, that, I don't think they were given a fair, they weren't dealt a fair hand in the way that we questioned them. We, we, we made them consider, could they, could they execute conservation easements and then we could later use that water for municipal use? We made them wrestle with that question. The rest of you all let me ask them that question and let them wrestle with that without clarifying for them the, the, the idea that, that we have encumbered water rights in the center, not, not conservation easements, surrounded by easements. We, we didn't let them truly understand the, the strategy. So when they were, when, and they were hesitant to answer, you know, the question, can, can we conserve and then later use for municipal, they said, ah, which is true, even in the strategy that's being discussed here tonight, within the conservation easements, that's in perpetuity. That, if that's put into easement, that's going to be in perpetuity. We wouldn't be going back to a, a, a portion or a parcel of land that's under conservation easement and then trying to use water from it. We're just trying to protect the, the water in the middle. So I, that, that was my perspective on the New Mexico Land Conservancy and, and, and I understand the, the desire for local and, and, and all of those things, but you know, efficiencies, you know, their experience and all of those things, I think, you know, again, th- those were points I made back then, but anyway, that's my perspective. Other comments, questions? Yes, Mr. Masters.
And I, I appreciate Commissioner Lovett's comments as well. One of the things, perspective-wise, that I would like to add to that is, I, I don't think necessarily, you know, if we don't get a hundred percent of the landowners wanting to agree to the encumbrances, that that makes the project fail because every encumbrance we get reduces that 93% that comes out for agricultural use. So it extends the life of our municipal wells, of Cannon Air Force Base wells. As, as Mr. Lansford pointed out, when we took the wall property out of production, the actual, the, the level of the wells around Cannon Air Force Base rose, ju- just from that action. So I think part of this is ideally, we get all the encumbrances in place, the aquifer recharges and sustains itself over a longer period of time. We don't get to the point where we have to go back and purchase the water because we've extended the life of all the municipal wells that support, so they, so they don't dry up, which is what, you know, the Trinity Report says is going to happen in 10 to 20 years with no action because we've now taken an intermediate action that extended all of that. So I, I, I don't think it's a one or the other. I think just the process of taking some of this water out of production is going to help the entire community.
I, I have to agree with, with that, Mr. Masters. I think taking it out of production is, any, any well that you can do that on, we're, we're ahead on, on conservation, but this conversation has never stopped just there. All of these folks have said, have talked about pumping that out and using it for municipal use, which lends itself to us having to think about, we're going back to an encumbered water right holder and saying, hey, we want to make a deal on this water now. And, you know, and again, not making excuses, not trying to be an obstructionist to, you know, the, the progress that's trying to be made, but just trying to understand it all and think it through. But I, I am with you. If we, if we encumbered water rights and conserved water, I, I think we've won. I think we've won, but, but again, most of the folks, most of the proponents of, of what we're talking about here tonight don't even pause after, after we've encumbered rights and then, and, you know, and there's, there's, you know, the idea that infrastructure would eventually be installed and the water is pumped out and used for municipal use.
Mayor, I believe Chairman Thornton.
Chairman Thornton from the County Commission. Come on up here, sir, appreciate you.
I think the last 20 minutes show exactly how complicated this is. You guys are all sitting up there going, what the heck was all that? And there's been a lot of people work on this for a very long time and all of the things that you, you have concerns about have come up and have been discussed. And I'll never forget, when we finished the water assurance plan and we brought it up here to get approved, Commissioner Madrid, his, his patented question, where are you going to get the money? And we found a, a place where we can get the money. And this is an opportunity that we're, we're not going to get again. The return on the investment for what we may or may not have to spend and all of that 150 or 300,000, whatever you want to call it, is an estimate. But the return on the investment, if, if you don't only get the $15 million one time, which you can go back and you can ask for more each time, but if you only get that $15 million one time and you spend $300,000, that's a 2% cost to you. You know, that's a great return on your investment. And Ms. Paula, I, I understand your problem with, with people in the channel being involved, but if it's your land, you would want some kind of say in how that's going to be done, how it's going to be dealt with. You know, they're not making the decisions, but they, their input is important to that process, I, I believe. And that's something that we've talked about for years. You know, part of the assurance plan was you have to get the ag producers involved so that you can find out what they need in order to basically give up their rights to their water. That's basically what you're asking them to do. And to your point, the land that you're taking out of irrigation will not necessarily be taken completely out of ag. You know, there, there'll be other uses for that, dryland farming, those things. What these conservancies and, and the land trust will do is basically allow those farmers that have been on that land, some of them for hundreds of years, the opportunity to continue to farm their land in a dryland fashion or if they want to run cattle or whatever they want to do. But it's going to give them the opportunity to continue to, to farm that land and pass it on to their kids or, or whatever they do. Very complicated, very, very complicated. You could sit here for days, months, and when we did the water assurance plan, we did, we sat there for months and we talked about, what if this happens? What if you do this? What, how do you make this work? You know, and all of the things that, that we talked about are coming to fruition. You know, the reuse deal that you guys have done, that's huge. I don't remember the numbers now, but the, the numbers of, of what you're taking, not taking out of the ground anymore, now you're putting on your, your parks and your, all of those things. Huge numbers, you know? And all of those things have been considered and beat up and pounded and everything else. And you can't sit here in, in an hour or two and understand everything that's went into this. But a lot of work has went into it and I believe personally, a local trust that has people, you know, one of you may be who they get to be the administrator. I don't know, you know, we don't know those things. How it's all going to work, how much money these guys are going to want, how much they're going to get, how much they even have that they have to prove out. You know, they're going to have to prove out how much water they have in order to figure out how much they're going to make. So all of those things have So all of those things have to be done. No one knows a hundred percent of the answers, but if we have a local trust that has the best interest of Clovis, Curry County, our entire community, and when I say community, I include everyone, you know, Melrose, Grady, Texaco, they're all my people, you know? And so it helps everyone. But we have to get past, we don't know everything that's going to happen and, and get this thing established so that we can move forward and be able to use the money that's now available to us. And the return on our investment is going to be very good.
Well, well said, Commissioner Thornton, appreciate you. Commissioner Madrid, go right ahead.
No, I've been working on this water deal for a long, long time also. And I, I don't think a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is too much to ask for, but I do want to guarantee that the county will not say, "We, we're, we're going to do a hundred and fifty thousand dollars" and later on they'll come along and say, "No, we don't want to do it because it don't, it don't help us at all." They did that with the Water Authority, they just got out and left us, we had to buy the water, the other water rights and all that stuff, they just left us and they said they wouldn't help our people. So I want to guarantee that they can get out of this contract, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think the city can put up the hundred and fifty thousand dollars and they put up the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I want to guarantee that they can get out of that deal when their commission votes on it. And I know, I know, I trust you, I trust you. I'm not talking about you either.
And, and I, and I fight a lot and I lose sometimes, but, uh, that would be part of the contract.
Okay.
And, and I agree. And I agree.
I don't have a problem with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I think that if the county's going to do it, they need to be, they need to be upfront with that stuff too.
You're preaching to the choir.
Yeah.
I, I understand where you're coming from.
When I first came into office, I watched Commissioner Thornton fight pretty hard to stay involved in the UTEW water commission and, and, and he expressed that he wished they were still involved in the authority and so I, I know that, I know that he means what he says there, but thanks for those comments, Commissioner Madrid. I think that we need to wrap up, I think that we can call this a success. I know that especially for those of you that have been working on this for so many years that continuing to try and talk about it and help people understand can, can become tiring and, uh, appreciate you exercising grace and patience in, in, uh, explaining things, uh, from your perspective this evening. I think the one thing is absolutely for sure, everyone in this room is a neighbor, we're all invested stakeholders in, in the, the, the best good for our community. And, um, and I think that, that this was a success because I, I, I'm certain that this commission has a greater understanding of, of what's being discussed in this, uh, in this land trust discussion. And, uh, we're all better prepared now to maybe ask some better questions and, and, and think real hard and, and, and figure out how it is that, uh, that it's appropriate that we, um, lean into this. So thank you, everyone, thanks for your time, thanks for, appreciate y'all, have a good evening.